Motion to approve the minutes as written.
There a sec. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, all three. Okay. Our next one, vouchers, do we have any vouchers that we have to sign?
One voucher from S.W. Cole.
Okay, I will sign that. Do I have to date this, Henry? 10, 22, 23. Mail, I don't know if we have any mail. Okay. With that, Stormwater Presentation from Conservation Agent. Okay, that's. Okay. And Planner Update, we'll do that at the end?
Yes.
Okay. It being... 6:46. Public hearing continuation, proposed subdivision of 148 Peckham Road. Joshua Aruda of Acushnet Mass applicant represented by John Romanelli of Zenith Land Survey is Lakeville, Mass. This proposal is for a three lot subdivision on a state access. Mr. Romanelli, are you out there, anybody from Zenith?
If you can mute yourself. I have an email from...
I didn't get it.
I have a email. We'll get this. I have an email from John Romanelli requesting continuation.
But they can hear any ambient noise in the house.
Oh, all right, okay. All right. Okay.
If it ever gets squirrely or you feel weird about something, just hit the X in the app.
All right.
To public hearing is what I mean.
Okay, is there a motion to go from a regular hearing into a public hearing for the continuation of 148 Peckham Road?
Make a motion to go into the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, the three of us. I'm sorry, missing tonight are Mark DeSilva and Phil Mello. I'm sorry, they're both out, but we do have a quorum. That public hearing that was on 6:45 PM, you have a letter from Mr. Romanelli stating that he would like to continue this?
Yes, I have an email from John Romanelli requesting continuation of tonight's public hearing.
Is there a motion to accept that continuation?
Motion to accept.
There a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mark, you should be able to see me now.
You look great.
Okay.
Where were you, downstairs in your dungeon?
I am. I can hear the pitter patter of little feet above me. I didn't get away from it all.
Okay, with that, our next public hearing is at 7:00. So we need to close out of the 6:45 public hearing and go back into ocean, open session, zero motion?
I'm so moved.
Can I interrupt for one second? When will be the next meeting for the continuation of the Peckham Road project? Do you know that yet?
I believe our next meeting will be November 12th.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. With that, we'll go out of public hearing on the continuation of 148 Peckham Road. Our next appointment is at 7:00 PM. So what we'll do is take a quick... 10-minute break because we have to go exactly at the time for the public hearings. So a motion to go back to the public hearing and take a 10-minute break till we can get back to the 7 o'clock meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to take... Motion to... Take a 10-minute break. There it is. Well, and we'll, you know, and then after the end of the 10-minute break, we can come back to the public hearing on the ground mounted solar array at 251 Mendel Road.
There a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll be back in 10 minutes, folks, sorry for that. So that one's pulled. That guy's got a good idea, put a cloth over the screen.
Right.
Can we do that? Okay, folks, I know we said we had a 10-minute break, but let me see if we can bring somebody up. Mr. Burke, are you out there? Or David Divignan, are you out there? Okay.
Yes. This is Richard Burke.
Okay, good. Okay, we'll go back into, I said we'd have a 10-minute break, but you guys are here. We don't have you on till... 9:00 PM, but we can squeeze you in now if that's okay with both of you, sir, David and Mr. Burke?
That'd be great, thank you.
David, okay with you?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Francois is with us too.
Okay, with that, we're going out of our commercial break, back into regular session, is there a motion? Can't hear you, Brian, yeah, okay, Rick, you all set?
I'll make a motion that we reopen. And... Our next item on the agenda.
Okay, we'll take it up with these are... Discussion for development of assessment plot eight lot 25, related access issues on ancient way. Mark Francis represented by Richard E. Burke, Jr. With that, is it, you want to rephrase anything or?
Sure, they have any opening statements.
Do you have any opening statements, Mr. Burke or David?
No, I don't, I think we covered the general outline of what we're looking to do and I think tonight was for the board to hopefully hear from town council and then we can...
David, you all set?
Yes, I'm all set.
David, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
He froze.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Richard, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, Dave.
Okay, so it's, it's gotta be back at home base over there.
Yep, I think there's an issue with the feed from our chairman.
Okay.
David, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Burke, can you hear us, sir?
Yes, I can.
Okay, with that, we will put a continuation on, Henry has something, you want to come onto this computer?
Yes.
Okay, we have dancing computers tonight, so bear with us, please.
Good evening, so we have had the opportunity to have KP Law review the submission that Mr. Burke and others supplied us with, thank you very much. So we have, of course, coming back from Jonathan Eichmann, attorney. 12. Counsel for Mark Francois, Richard Burke and Peter Paul Jr. have submitted separate opinions to the planning board. In the opinion of Jonathan Eichmann, KP Law. Those opinions submitted by the three attorneys I just mentioned make out an adequate legal argument that Mr. Francois possesses legal rights to use and improve the private way as asserted. And the planning board may accept those opinions as sufficient to settle the question for purposes of considering a subdivision of Lot 25B. Further, Mr. Eichmann recommends the planning board not attempt to further, to settle any kind of further dispute with regard to the access rights. In the next paragraph, improvements made by Mark Francois to the private way. Planning board to divide Lot 25B into lots must show the surveyed boundaries of the way as it forms the boundaries of those lots. Mr. Eichmann further recommended to the board that we require, if these lots are to be divided, require the filing as of a subdivision plan, a Form C subdivision, to accomplish the lot division and necessary road improvement. So that was the, that's a summary of the feedback from KP Law. Do you gentlemen have any questions?
Henry.
Yeah.
As soon as you started saying improvements, you went and froze on us. So we really didn't hear the second half of the memo.
Do that again, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Henry, who, there's obviously some real technical problem at this point because, yeah, I heard virtually nothing that you said. I mean, a couple of bits and pieces and I lost it at the same point that the, that the previous speaker had. It's, it's really not going to be possible to hold a meeting if, if the chairman's speed keeps breaking up like that. Mark was frozen for quite a while, you know, we couldn't hear him, he evidently couldn't hear us. Is there anything, anybody that you can talk to quickly to see if we can resolve this? It's just going to be almost impossible to hold a meeting if you, if the chairman keeps freezing like this.
Yeah, let me, can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, I'm going to check, we've got another computer sitting right next to me, I'll try that.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to return to reading what KP Law has, Burke. Can you both hear us now, David and Mr. Burke?
I can hear you, Richard Burke.
Yes, I'm good, yes, I can.
All right, good evening again, gentlemen, we're not going to win any Academy Awards tonight, but A for perseverance. So before we had our technical glitch, I was paraphrasing a correspondence between John Eichmann, attorney for KP Law, and the planning board. So I'll go through the entire paraphrase again. The planning board previously determined that this private way was a way in existence when the budding land to the north was subdivided in 2012. Counsel for Mark Francois, Richard Burke Jr. and Peter Paul Jr. have submitted separate opinions to the planning board with regard to this. It is the opinion of John Eichmann, attorney, KP Law, that those opinions make out an adequate legal argument that Mr. Francois possesses the legal rights to use and improve the private way as asserted. And the planning board may accept those opinions as sufficient to settle the question for purposes of considering a subdivision of Lot 25B. Further, Mr. Eichmann recommends the planning board not attempt to settle any further disputes with respect to access rights. Mr. Eichmann further opined that improvements made by Mark Francois's, the private way, will be at his sole expense and further, while the plans and deeds that he had reviewed showed that an easement pertinent to the budding land to the north was established in the location of the private way, no layout of the private way has been found. And any plans submitted to the planning board to divide lots, the lot 25B into lots must show the survey boundaries of the way as it forms the boundaries of those lots. And then finally, he recommended to the planning board that any division of the lots, the board should require the filing of a subdivision plan to accomplish the lot division and the necessary road improvement. Any questions?
No, not at this time, thank you, I don't know if you have any, Dave?
Henry, my only question would be next step in the process. Can you convene a meeting with department heads to talk about the improvements? Because this is an unconventional definitive subdivision.
Correct. I think that would be a good move, David, and I can set that up for, you know, we hold those on Tuesdays. Julie has, Julie, the town administrator, has recently changed the schedule, so let me see when I can put you next on the docket and I'll bring you in.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
If I could ask a question, Mark?
Go right ahead, Rick.
I don't have the plan in front of me, is there any intention at this time to divide Lot 25B?
Were you gentlemen able to hear that, Mr. Burke or David?
Yes.
Go ahead, Richard.
Lot... B, we're talking about Lot 25, which is Mr. Francois's lot. I'm not sure what the reference is to 25B.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, this response from town council specifically says that any plans submitted to the planning board to divide Lot 25B into lots must show the survey boundaries. So I'm just asking if there's any, if there's any desire to divide Lot 25B at this time?
Oh, yes, I think I can explain the confusion. There was a plan, the plan that divided the Francois property from one brother and the other, they created lots 25A and 25B. The focus of our, this exercise is 25B, but currently 25B is no longer a single entity, is three retreat lots. They've been on the assesses maps for at least 15 years. So what we're proposing to do is create a roadway layout over the ancient way. Turn the easement which exists into a formal layout so that we would be bifurcating the retreat lots and therefore creating frontage along both sides and doing away with the three retreat lots, which would need a common driveway in order for, for them to have access. And currently, the three retreat lots are on the assesses maps and they have been since the retreat lot plan is dated 06, December 1, 06. So the, the idea is to take the three retreat lots, make them go away by creating a conventional roadway layout over the ancient way and creating conventional frontage for a standard lot, 60,000 square feet, 150 feet of frontage. So the, the three lots would become five lots. I believe. Or six.
Okay, so that's, thank you.
It would become six lots.
Um, now, in order to get to those lots that are proposed to be created, how long is the roadway from Perry, it's Perry Hill, right? Up to, up to there?
I'd have to go back to the subdivision which was approved for the end of the ancient way for the snow property. There was a waiver granted for that subdivision which has passed this property for length of road.
Is there water up to there or no water?
No water.
Okay.
So David, the waiver was for the property, the trip property out at the end?
That's correct, the waiver was for the trip property.
Right, but not for, not for any lots along the way?
That, that's correct, the total length.
Okay, I, I, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I'm a little confused at this point. So you're saying it's already a subdivision? I don't understand the, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get a handle on just what's being proposed there. We're supposedly talking about an ancient way, but now you're referring to some subdivision. So there was a subdivision, I wasn't around when that was done, so I have to take a little bit of ignorance on that. May, maybe in need of a little more re-education.
Actually, Richard, Rick, you were, you signed the plan.
I don't remember it anyway. 67, I can, I can get a senior moment or two. Well, I might have completely forgotten about it then.
He could have been your father, I suppose, says Richard Ellis.
Richard Ellis could have been myself or, or him. So, can you read a middle initial? I'm curious now.
There's an H.
That's dear old dad, okay, I wasn't around for that one.
Okay.
And, and dear old dad is not around at all anymore, so, so.
To answer your question, the length of road waiver was granted for, the length of road to be 1,388 feet long to that cul-de-sac. This property is before you get to the end of that.
Okay. Um. All right, thanks, because I just, that clarifies it for me, I understand.
I think the end of the road, the, the dead-end road, I think it was 1,000 feet, now it's 1,500 for no water and 2,500 if you have water?
Good question, is that, was it revised to 1,500, Henry?
Aye, it's in the subdivision plan which, copy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I, I just, I just didn't want anybody to start on some expensive engineering exercise and get down to a problem with a waiver on like, that's all.
Right.
Sure.
I, I think the purpose of this exercise at this point was just to determine if, what the rights of Mark Francois are on the piece of road where there was a common ownership. And that would lead to the potential for further development through a subdivision on the, the fork of the road that went off to, specifically to Mark Francois's property. So just to put a fine point on the end of this, the, the next step would be if Mr. Francois wants to pursue a Form C subdivision, we should come in to have Dave come in to meet with the department heads and have a discussion, a cursory discussion on what that would look like. And, and begin to address some of these, these issues like, you know, length of, of way and so forth.
I mean, I, I think that part of that should be a complete list of all the waivers that you're going to require to do that. Like all of them.
Right.
Maybe a better route, Henry, would be to submit a preliminary subdivision plan. At least, you know, a bare bones definitive plan, if you will, that's essentially what a preliminary is, just to get some feedback and propose something for moving forward.
That's entirely up, up to you.
Okay, we'll discuss that internally, thank you.
Thank you.
With that... With that, we're still in a public hearing, but let me see, give me one second. We're still in the regular meeting, so David, Mr. Burke and yourself are all set with this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Sorry for the technical difficulty, but better you guys than somebody else, huh?
It's a new, it's a new world.
It really is. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
David, you'll get with Henry for that Tuesday night meetings, or Tuesday meetings?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, do we have to bail out of this one?
So now our next step is to go into public hearing.
Our next step is 7:00 PM, continuation of a public hearing, is there a motion to go into a public hearing for proposed ground mounted solar array 251 Mendel Road?
Don't move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. With that, we have someone from... Borrego Solar Systems, maybe Brandon Smith or someone from there?
Yes, Brandon Smith, civil engineer at the project, good evening.
Good evening, sir. If you just introduce yourself and tell us why you're here.
Yeah, so again, Brandon Smith, civil engineer at Borrego Solar for the 251 Mendel Road solar project. So with this project, we have, we've incorporated all the comments from the planning... So with this project, we have, we've incorporated all the comments from the planning board, Chief Gallagher, Conservation Commission, which we've already received approval. And then what's new since our last meeting is the DPW comments as well. Those have all been incorporated in the latest plans that we've submitted to the board. We have also, this is also news since our last meeting, we've reached an agreement on the decommissioning amount with SW Coal. And we find that amount that they've submitted to be acceptable. So it's our belief we're ready to close the hearing, but of course, willing to answer any questions the board may have.
Do we, do we have any questions from any of the gentlemen on the board?
I'm all set, Mark.
I'm all set, Mark.
All right, okay. Henry, do you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, just to reiterate that we've received a letter from SW Coal for the decommissioning and the decommissioning amount, which will be paid by a check for surety in the amount of a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. That, that amount will go into the special permit, which will eventually be signed after the twenty-one day appeal period.
Are you all set with that? It's Mr. Smith, right?
Yep, yep, and yep, that's acceptable to us.
Okay, so we have to make a motion to accept?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept this proposed mounted solar array two fifty-one Mendel Road?
And approve a special permit and site plan review.
And approve a special permit and a site plan review. Is there a motion?
There is a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous for the three that were there? With that, you have to, we have to do some paperwork?
I will. So I will prepare the special permit, insert the decommissioning amount. And then the, after the twenty-one day, twenty-one day appeal period, I'll need the signatures of members of the board who voted to sign that, and they'll be good to go.
Great. I appreciate the time tonight. And Henry, I also wanted to mention, I did submit or send in three copies of the plans with a signature block. I know we talked about two, but I was hoping that if the board was able to sign those, if we could get a copy as well.
We can do that, no problem.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, let's just find Mickey now.
It's, with that, we will move out of the public hearing and go back into regular session. Is there a motion?
Motion to go back into regular session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous for the three of us. With that, our next public hearing is seven fifteen. We're running a little late, but we're doing pretty good. With that, we have to go back into a public hearing again. Is there a motion to go into a public hearing for proposed?
Motion to go into a public hearing for proposed commercial development at one fifty-eight Main Street, one sixty-six Main Street and seventeen Wing Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. With that, I don't have to read this, do I? Or you want me to read it?
It's a continuation.
So this is just a continuation of that public hearing. Is, do we have anybody out there for proposed commercial development continuation, one fifty-eight, one sixty-six Main Street and seventeen Wing Road, New England Retail Development?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Pat McLaughlin, civil engineer with Greeman Peterson, here representing the applicants. We also do have Mickey Higgins on tonight, as well as Tom Pratt and their attorney Phil Lombardo, and Heather Monticup also from GPI is our, our traffic engineer that will be here to, to discuss some traffic related items. So I understand that, that Mickey and Phil briefly spoke with you folks last month. I was not in attendance at that meeting, so I'm not a hundred percent sure how much of a project introduction was given at that time. I'm happy to jump in and start a presentation as if no one knows too much about it, and we'll just go from there. So I'm gonna need some screen share ability. It looks like I might be able to do that already.
If you could do a presentation, that would be welcome. Thank you.
All right. Can someone confirm that they're seeing my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
I got, I can see the plan, no problem.
Excellent. Okay, yep, so the, the project that we're talking about is at the corner of Wing Road and Main Street. It's currently the site of what has been Tony's service station for quite some time. It also includes two adjacent residential lots, one on Wing Road and one on Main Street. So three parcel, existing parcels included. So the proposal is for a forty-two hundred eighty-five square foot convenience store with a gas dispensing canopy with, with four dispenser islands, which equates to eight fueling locations. There's also a proposal for a drive-through window off the convenience store. There are a number of existing access points along mainly Main Street as a few access points, and then essentially Wing Road currently is one large wide open curb cut. So the proposal is to reduce the number of site driveways and push everything as far possible from the intersection and create a large amount of green space, which will increase visibility and just clean up the intersection and really improve it from where it was. And I have some 3D renderings that I'd like to share with everyone after I go through the, the site plan layout a little bit. So the, the convenience store would be oriented perpendicular to Main Street. The front door facing towards Wing Road and the, the canopy being parallel to the store. Meaning that, that the vehicle's fueling would be parked parallel to Main Street. And we have a row of striped parking spaces along the front. We've got some additional spaces out closer to the intersection and some employee spaces up to the east with a, with a dumpster enclosure. The, the site sits a little bit below the surrounding properties to the east. If you can picture when you're traveling towards Main Street, along Wing Road, it may not seem like it, but you actually are coming downhill a little bit. And there was actually a decent amount of gray change between the, you know, the top side of the Wing Road frontage and the far opposite corner along Main Street. So we did have to look at some grade challenges there. But that necessitates a small, maybe three foot higher, so retaining wall in this back corner. So there's a reduction in the onsite impervious area. We're reducing quite a bit of pavement that was in this, in this front corner now. I'll try and do a little highlighter trick here real quick. This is the limits of the existing canopy that Tony has out there now. Almost sitting right on Main Street, right up close to the right of way line. So the new canopy and building would be pushed further away from the intersection, that, from the roadway than the current canopy, which again is not only complies with current zoning, but also just really cleans up that, that vantage point along Main Street, which you'll see on the perspective rendering in a moment. The signage for the existing site is pushed all the way to the corner. We're gonna pull that back again to aid with visibility at the intersection. There are green spaces everywhere. We could try to possibly squeeze some, some buffering in. So this green space along the residential to the, to the north and east. The residential lot on Wing Road stays primarily green space, and then again, the, the large amount at the intersection. The, there's currently no stormwater on the, the existing site. What happens is, for the most part, stormwater flow that's coming down Wing Road actually does not stay in the road. It comes across Tony's site and eventually popped back out and is collected in the existing drainage facilities in Main Street. So we'd be proposing an entirely new stormwater management system to capture or collect stormwater on the site, run it through deep sump, hooded catch basins and oil-water separators and and eventually discharge back where everything's currently going, which is to the Main Street system. Utility connections would all be proposed to the new store off of Main Street. There will be a decent amount of reconstruction work along this frontage anyways to rebuild an established raised sidewalk through here. So, you know, the, the utility connection work right here, adjacent to the, the new store would would work well in terms of disturbances in the right of way. So that's pretty much the, the lay of the land, and I would like to share the renderings with you because I think it gives a really good visual of, of what the site has the potential to look like. So here we are on Main Street, just past the intersection, looking at Tony's station. You can see the existing residents. That's also part of this project on Main Street. Again, the canopy is basically right at the right of way line. Even these curb cuts are, are pretty wide and not controlled well. And so as you flip to the same vantage point in the proposed condition, you can see the added green space, the site being pushed back away from the road. These renderings actually do take into account proposed elevation as well. So you can see that, you know, this lawn area and this driveway are somewhat sloping up into the site. So this is a very good perspective of what the Main Street approach would look like. And again, it's just, it's pushed nice and far back from the intersection. So similarly, when you look at this from Wing Road, unfortunate point of view again, but when we see the comparison to what the site would look like from Wing Road, it's really a vast improvement. You can see that small retaining wall I was talking about. Again, the canopy is pushed back. You can see, you know, we're straight through the intersection and out onto, to Main Street, so quite an improvement. One thing that this reminds me of is we will have all LED dark sky compliant site lighting. And again, we, you know, we've tried to provide landscape and some, some opportunities for some open green space. I think that the proposal has, you know, the adequate amount of parking space for this size store. I don't think that it's, it's overparked. I think for fueling islands is, is reasonable for the, for the scale of the property and, and for the project. I believe that Mickey has, maybe this was to the zoning board and not, not to, to this board, but there was a, a close by location that's, that's operated and is, is very similar, if not the same architecture in terms of the building and the canopy architecture and just, you know, how they maintain their sites. I know that's in a nearby community and maybe Mickey can speak to that in a little while for those of you who, you know, who don't know too much about what the, the sites look like. So yeah, you know, you can see we're proposing a, a solid white vinyl fence along the rear for the to buffer the, the drive-through lane. And yeah, you know, again, the, the perspective as you're coming down Wing Road is the site's actually gonna sit a little bit lower. So I think that, that trash enclosure, you're not gonna, you're gonna feel like that's tucked away pretty well. So I really think the site's thought out pretty well. We, we looked at some different layout options for this. But having the, the operations of the, the vehicle's fueling with the headlights and such being parallel to Main Street. And, and really the, the only way they would be shining would be out towards the cemetery across Wing Road. So we, we feel like there's benefit there. We do understand that, you know, exiting vehicles at, at the Main Street driveways may, or will, you know, cast headlights, but that's the, the case with any development. And so we're happy to talk about those types of items and, and I believe hear feedback from this board. And yes, Heather's here to talk about some traffic related stuff. I know there was a request for a traffic study, which is still in the works. So, yeah, so we're happy to, to answer questions, or if you'd prefer Heather to, to do some traffic discussion, we can do that and then have some questions after.
Well, the way we work the public hearing is we ask the gentleman of the board if they have any questions, and then we go out to the public and ask them. So gentlemen on the board, Brian or Rick, do you have any questions?
I think I understand what project is pretty well. I, I still have a concern about the volume of the traffic that this is going to generate with this type of use versus what's out there now. And having those three entrances and exits right on Main Street. I just, you've got a, a drive-through, which could be a very high volume in the morning or again, in the afternoon. Those people are gonna come out and have to make a right or a left onto Main Street. You've got a number of people that, that in their commute to and from work, morning and, and evening, you know, are gonna be parked at that convenience store to make a quick in and out. So now we've got another, we've got an in and out right next to that higher volume drive-through, and, and then we've got yet another entrance on Main Street. For a driver that's going down Main Street, there's gonna be a lot of decisions that have to be made relatively quickly. And that's not always the best thing for, for traffic continuity and lack of accidents. Also, if I'm driving north on Main Street and I happen to pass the, the entrance area and I have to hit the second entrance right in front of the store, now those cars have gotta worry about traffic or parked cars backing out, getting ready to leave. I, I see another source of conflict there. It, it just, it seems like there's a, I mean, I, off the top of my head, I mean, I'd like to see one exit, one entrance, and that combined entrance exit just eliminated completely from Main Street. Make everybody go in and out on, on Wing Road. That's just off the top of my head. Yeah, the other question that I, I do have one, I do have one other thing. You know, we did get an opinion that the ZBA is gonna determine whether that drive-through is even going to be allowed or not. And I was wondering, this is, I guess, a question to you, Henry, if there's, the ZBA has made any decision relative that, to that drive-through being an allowed use in that zone?
No. No, the ZBA has not made a determination on that yet. So that's still.
No, the ZBA has not made a determination on that yet. So that's still an outstanding issue.
Okay. I mean, that that obviously changes would change some of my comments dramatically to not have that that higher volume drive through, you know, with so many drivers coming, having trying to come out onto Main Street and having to merge with the traffic that's there. I I I think that's an issue. I mean, we've got kind of the reverse thing at Dunkin' Donuts right now that the drive through was initially not allowed, then then it was allowed. And of course, now busy mornings and all the times we've got traffic backing up with the street, which is the reverse problem of of this. This you would have exiting traffic from the drive through, you know, going on onto Main Street with a fair amount of traffic back and forth on the street. Lot of decisions for drivers in that one section. I mean, right now, granted, this the the access is is pretty well open. Like people can kind of come and go as they please, but there's very little traffic generation from the site as it exists now.
Is there any other questions from anybody on the board?
No, I'm all set, Mark.
Henry, do you have anything? With that, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak, please?
Yeah, I I would like to speak, please. My name is Joshua DeRoche. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Odilia, as well. We actually are the butters to the north.
And your address, please, sir?
168 Main Street.
Thank you.
Actually, I would appreciate if we could bring the map back up. Could it 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 helps out a lot.
Is that possible at all, Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes, I was unaware that I stopped sharing. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. I appreciate that.
Sure.
So, you know, I'm a we're we're lifelong residents. We've been living next to Tony's station for a long time. I remember when the Shell station used to be there, you should ride my bike by there when I was a child. It looked really nice. So we were happy to hear that someone wanted to come in, develop the area. However, we obviously have some concerns. As it stands right now, we are completely flanked by residential along our border, both to the north and the east. And as you can see, this plan plans to knock down two residential areas and not only move the commercial site from where Tony's is, but they decide to tuck it pretty much as close as they can to our property, which is pretty much our front yard. As it stands right now, our borders, we have about 25 foot abrevities lining all the north and east side. In the plans, they're going to come down and they're putting up a six foot fence. So a a six foot fence from 25 foot and then you're putting in a you know, I know they state it's a 4,200 square foot building, which actually is not. If you look, there's a seven by 20 cooler on the end of it. So that makes it a 44, 45 foot square foot building, which is pretty much 50% larger than the 3,000 square square foot bylaws, what they allow. Obviously, the other issue is the drive through. You know, if you go through the bylaws, the way I've interpret the bylaws, that there is no drive through allowed in the Business Village District. To be honest with you, I can't get a straight answer from anyone in the town. You know, the zoning board, the planning board, the building department, no one can give us a straight answer to whether it's allowed or not. There is things in the bylaws that state about impertinent services being disallowed on both the side and the back. So what my question would be is even if the drive through is allowed or, you know, they they plan to put like clam shells around around the building. And the other thing is, out of all this, you know, you know, we we want this area cleaned up. You know, we would like to work with the planning board. You know, it's it's Business Village District. It's it should be a good marriage between the business and the village. The 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 bylaws are set for 3,000 square feet. So it prevents a situation like this where someone would come in and throw up a behemoth of a building that overshadows the rest of the village. So as this plan sets now, you know, I honestly, I would I would challenge the planning board to to come up with a more offensive plan to the butter in this case. And this doesn't even top my biggest concern, which is what everybody's been talking about is the traffic. You know, if you look on the map where where the drive through exit is, you look just going a little bit north, you see a dotted line that states the gravel line. Well, guess what? That's another entrance. That's my driveway. So now you have one, two, three, and four, and my driveway is so close to that exit from the from the drive through. As it is in the morning, you know, it's two minutes sometimes that I'm waiting to get on to on to Main Street to make it. And on Saturday mornings, when I'm when I'm getting out, you know, there's backup all the way from from the stop sign. So obviously, we have a lot of concerns, you know. A- as it stands now, all our abrevities are taken down and and I walk out on my porch. I see this ginormous obstructive offensive building with a drive through in my front lawn. I have a young family. I really don't want to be hearing people ordering donuts at five o'clock in the morning. And, you know, and and there's there's a push now to put 15 foot poles with lights on and signage that would pretty much light up my our property like a Christmas tree. So obviously, I would think the board could understand our concerns at this point.
And yes, we do. That's why we have this public hearing. This is the first time that we have seen this part of the plan or anything through the planning board. We do thank you very much for your input and we still have to do a site plan review on this. Is that correct, Henry? That's part of the special permit, but let me ask, is there anybody else pro or con for this that would like to speak? I can't see you, Dave, but name, address, town, speak away.
I'm Dave DeViglino. Somebody screamed my name. I'm not sure who that was.
I thought it was you.
No, it was not.
Okay.
With the screen share, you can't see anybody. So it's going to be difficult for people to raise their hands for you to see everybody that wants to speak. I think the screen.
Do you want, let me ask you this. Do you want the screen to stay up? You want to take it off and talk to the people? Does everybody? Go ahead.
I think it should be removed and brought back when needed because otherwise it doesn't give everybody a chance to see what's going on.
No problem. How's that?
That's that's fine. That's great. Mr. Patrick Liberty lives directly across the street. And he has asked me to speak on his behalf. In looking at that plan, the drive through exit and the second and the next entrance down that's proposed, both of those exit points lights from the cars will be directly into his living room. So that that's a huge cause of concern for him because what what he looks at now is an existing residential house. A nice, well maintained property, lots of trees in the front bushes, there's a large tree right in front of the house. That's what he has for a view directly in front of his house and a little bit to the right. He may look at parked cars in Tony's former Tony's former station. Tony doesn't own it anymore. So that's what he's been looking at. No traffic coming and going for the last 20 years. And the bylaws state pretty clearly to me that they're not supposed to impact the neighbors in a negative way. And I don't see how you can take a, I'm not anti-development. Let me state that first. I'm for this project being pushed forward the right way. The man has a right to develop his property, just like anybody else does. He has a right to a gas station by right through the bylaws. He has a right to a convenience store. 3,000 square feet per the bylaws. The problem, the biggest problem I see with this issue with this this project is the layout that is proposed is going to negatively impact the butters directly adjacent to the property and directly across the street. They're taking a building that has existed there for 40 years. They're removing it and I agree it's an eyesore and the sites and eyesore should be cleaned up by now. They've owned it since June 20th. And it's still an eyesore. I don't understand that, but they're taking that building, they're replacing it with a bigger building and they're taking down a house and putting the building in that location. It's just not good planning. It's not fair to the neighborhood, what's being proposed and laid out. And I agree with the past speaker that it couldn't be a more poor design for his property directly adjacent to him. The drive through, I want to make a point of this. The Board of Appeals Chairman made it clear to us at that public hearing several weeks ago that the only thing there, the only thing they're discussing at their hearing was the size of the store and nothing else. No traffic, no site layout, no variances. The drive through is not a permitted use in the bylaws. It's clear as day. You don't have to be an attorney to read it. It's not allowed use. I've heard talk that there's an implied allowance because it doesn't specifically say it's not allowed. All you have to do is go to the very first paragraph of the allowed uses and it says anything not listed is prohibited. Furthermore, the bylaws state that you cannot have paved accessways on the side and rear of a building. That supports the fact that the drive through is not allowed use in this district. So a variance is needed for two two items in the bylaws and they haven't applied for it. You're looking at a site plan that has violations of the zoning bylaws and I think that should be corrected before the site plan review is put out to peer review. So that that's all I'd like to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you for that, David. Is there anybody else who would like to speak pro or con, please? Yes, sir. You have your serve gentleman with the glasses raising his hand. Please.
Hi, yeah, my name is Tom O'Brien. I own Rochelle's Restaurant on Main Street. I've been there for about 20 years. The one thing I'd like to start off by saying is probably in a 20 years, what I've heard probably hundreds of times is how people like the quaintness of the town. You know, I know times change. Everybody has a right to their business, just like I do. But my question, I guess, I don't know if it'll be to the board or or to the developers, but do you really need something that big? I mean, can you can you do what what you need to do within the 3,000 square feet allowed? You know, what, I I mean, I'm, I guess, from looking at what I've been seeing, you know, it's going to be a gas station and a drive through. I mean, do you need 4,000 plus square feet for for that? I mean, like what what else is going to be sold in there? What else is going to be done that you need a building so big? I just, I just want to put a question out there. Thank you.
With that, thank you for your time, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to speak pro or con or answered any of those questions? This is a public hearing, folks, so please feel free. This is a time to speak.
My name's Andy Springer. I've been a taxpayer in Acushnet for years. My land on Keen Road's been my family since the 1700s. So we've been paying taxes on our land since before Acushnet was even a Acushnet. So we care very much about our town and what happens there. I grew up in the Acushnet in the 60s, 70s and 80s, when much of that time it was a vibrant Shell station that operated there. One of my best friends, a Soviet family lived right across the street and we're at the Shell station all the time fixing our bikes. And then when I got my license, they were fixing my cars until they until the Shell station closed down and it became Tony's, which is the current eyesore that's there. Jake's Variety Store was right across the street. It's now a dog grooming business. Having the convenience of the convenience store and the gas station was very nice in the neighborhood. The proposed use of the site is similar to what the site was all that time. The redevelopment of the three locations and three buildings into one, I don't know what the square footage was. I didn't go to Town Hall to do all that to find out what the current square footage is of the three buildings. But I would guess that it's probably pretty close to what's proposed to be built there. As a taxpayer, I'm in favor of the approval of this. I think that there's a lot of benefits to the town. It's going to employ more people. It's going to pay more taxes in real estate, probably twice as much. It's going to look so much better in our town center. I understand the quaintness. I love the quaintness. I don't, I I've seen New England farms operating all around in all the neighboring communities. They're in New Bedford, they were in Berkeley, they were in Freetown, Middleboro, Wareham. They've got a great reputation. They're the best in the industry. They're clean. You go into those into those sites, they update them regularly. I think we'd be lucky to have them. And quite frankly, if you've got somebody that's going to put two and a half millions to $3 million investment in the center of town to take away the greatest eyesore that's there, I don't know how we can oppose it. I understand there's safety issues that need to be addressed and I understand neighborhoods issues, but I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak pro or con?
Before, I just have one, I just have one thing, Mark, but I want everybody in the audience to have a crack first. So when when the audience is done, they just have a question for Henry.
David? Or CCA is on? Go right ahead, please.
Yes, hi. My name is Pat Liberty. I live on 165 Main Street. Dave was speaking for me earlier about my property and inconvenience I was going through with the lighting from vehicles. I guess what was failed to mention was that I know they're still working on a traffic study there. And again, with the vehicles that Mr. Roche was talking about, difficult to get out of the under the normal circumstances. And right now, we still have COVID going, so we don't have, only half the buses traveling in front of my house is usually 25 or 30. They leave to school at the same time and they back up almost four blocks. And people want to get down that street, then they got kids getting on and off the buses, stopping dead smack right in front of that coffee gas station shop. Children constantly getting on and off their buses all day long. And you know, people in hurry to get their coffee or get their gas and get aggravated, try to sneak around and get into the gas station. Something could possibly happen. I hope it wouldn't be that way, but I hate to see that. And again, forcing traffic to go not down Main Street anymore, but not go down Allen Street to avoid that intersection that don't want to get gas or coffee or avoid that turmoil of all those vehicles. They're going to start bothering other local people, street it to a way and running cars back and forth down their streets. And the situation is generally, it doesn't even happen. They don't even expect it, but that's going to happen. And again, with the lighting into my house, you mentioned it goes into my living room with the cars. It goes into my living room, my master bedroom and my and my double power. My whole house faces east, every room I have. My house is about four feet below grade of that street. My house was down a slope. So every light that comes across that street, I'm going to start putting plywood in my windows so I can sleep at night. Or in the morning, I can get up and start having a couple of coffee without looking at constant light bulbs driving in and out of those traffic lanes coming across into my window. I just see this as nothing but drama for me and drama for people coming up and down the intersection. It's not about the quality of the building, size of the building is creating way too much traffic. We love to have New England farm, Biscayne, places everywhere and they're beautiful. They do a great job. They just got to bring down the size on it, redesign the angle of it and get rid of that coffee drive through because those things are not part of the the environment that we have around here. All set. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. David, did you have something you wanted to say?
I wanted to know if the engineer could pull up the rendering of the building from Main Street from the side view. It's one, it's one of the sheets on the plan through the sheet, shared screen.
Mr. McGlaughlin, can you do that, sir?
I can. So you want the elevation view rather than the the than the perspective?
Yes.
Well, he's putting that rendition up. I just want to say we do have some other public hearings. I just want those people to know that they'll be up next. Once we're done with this one, everybody gets to talk. Okay?
I believe this is what you would be talking about. On the top, we have the the front elevation of the building and then yeah, on on the bottom here, we have what you'd be viewing from from the Main Street side.
Thank you, Pat. My my point here, Mr. Chairman and board members are, is simply that Mr. Mr. Liberty currently looks across at a single family currently looks across at a single family residence, which has mature trees and your really nice landscaping in front. And this is now what he's going to be looking at, a commercial building, ugly as sin, no windows, there's no vegetation hiding it front and center and on the left side, a proposed drive out lane for the drive through coming right at him, on the right side, another exit point, all coming right at him. And that is the difference in the perspective of what he looks at now and what he will be staring at in perpetuity, and I don't think that is good planning. Thank you.
Thank you again. Is there anybody else that would like to speak pro or con? Please feel free.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, please introduce yourself.
It's Gary Hathaway, 19 Weston Street in Acushnet. There were, there were a couple of questions that were asked and we didn't get an answer to. I think Mr. O'Brien was asking the question about what services, what products and what things were going to be offered. I think it's really important because there's a correlation between what they're planning on doing there and what type of traffic that it's going to develop. So I'd like to know and put it on the record, what they're, what they're planning on doing at that location.
Is there anybody from New England that would like to speak on that? With that, I don't, I don't have the answer for you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak pro or con?
One more thing, yeah, I have one more question I just. Is the planning board planning on getting a determination on the drive through?
The planning board is going to do a site plan review, which more than likely will bring the lawyers into this case to find out everything that has to be done, has not to be done, read the rules and regulations. I don't know, Rick, if you wanted to speak on that or?
I, I mean, I, my recollection of the bylaw is that drive through uses are, you know, are prohibited, period. And the same thing, whatever is not specifically allowed is prohibited, that's my understanding. I, I did have that, I obviously want to put that question to Henry and I have another question for Henry when, when he's ready.
Okay, we'll put Henry on.
Yes, Rick, what was your second question?
Well, the, the second question is they've, it's been said a couple of times tonight that anything over 3,000 square feet is not allowed. I, I just, is it, is the reading that they're allowed up to 3,000 square feet by right and over 3,000 square feet? They have to look at a special permit and a site plan review? Is that, is that the correct way of looking at it? I mean, if it's just not allowed, period. I, I don't know, that doesn't seem to make sense to me, that there would be no provision for any building bigger than 3,000 square feet.
So I'll take your second question first. Okay. You are correct in that by right, a structure of 3,000 square feet is allowed and anything in excess of 3,000 square feet requires a approval by special permit, which is granted by the ZBA. So the, the second question that you had, and it's kind of come up here, is the the use of the, the drive through. So it's the preliminary determination of counsel that drive through is not a permitted use in the village business district. There is one at the Dunkin' Donuts, of course, but that was approved before the creation of a business commercial district. And the business commercial district does allow drive throughs. And, and when that was put in place, now you have a district that allows specifically a drive through. So therefore, in other districts where it's not specifically stated, that is a, that is not a permitted use.
Okay, now, no, are we in the district that
We are in the
allows it or not allows it with this, with this project?
It disallows it, does not allow a drive through.
Okay, so they would, they would actually be required to get a variance from the bylaw in order to put a, a drive through there.
So they'd be, they'd be going to the ZBA for that as well?
Okay, for, for a special permit and a variance.
Right. And then as, as, you know, the so that, those are the, I think I answered two of your questions, Rick, and I think that
I'm all set, I'm, I'm more, I'm more clear on it now, thank you.
Okay, so I while, while I kind of have the floor, I have a couple of other questions out there. For the gentleman who said that his, he was going to lose his arborvitae's. I didn't quite understand that, are the arborvitae's on your property?
I know they're not on my property, but you know, I feel like if you're going to take a residential building down, am I on mute? Take a residential building down and, and knock down the arborvitae's that were there and you're taking the building down for residential and you're placing a 40, a greater than 40 foot, hundred square foot building and then you're only popping a six foot fence. You, you know, I, I'm not sure law wise how, how that states, however, I just, I don't think it's good practice to the abutting neighbor. You would think that they would want to come in and work with the abutter to, to make something that works for both the town and the neighborhood.
Well, as the chairman, as Chairman Sinrissio suggested, that's, that's kind of the reason why we're here is to, you know, find, you know, these, to work through issues like that and see if there's something the developer might be able to do to mitigate, you know, your circumstance. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear that the arborvitae's aren't yours, but they're on you.
That is absolutely correct, you're absolutely correct on that. And, and you know why, why I'm talking, I, I would just like to a, address the special permit for the size of the building. In the bylaws, if you look, it's, it talks about what you need for a special permit. And, and you know, I, I was, my, my wife and I were a little concerned when we listened to last ZBA board. You know, first, we weren't sure, it seemed like they were just trying to plow through and, and you know, you know, go ahead and give the special permit without even addressing the bylaws. I'm not sure if, if they were familiar with the bylaws or, or what, what the, what the situation was. But if you look in the bylaws, you don't even have to go underneath the, the point A, B, C. In the definition itself, if you look, it stately says, shall not be substantially detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood or destruction of property values. So you know, it cannot be granted if it's detrimental. I mean, if you look where the, the drive through exit is to my drive, that's detrimental. As I stated before, I really don't think it can be more offensive how it is designed now to the abutter, both to myself and, and Mr. Liberty that's across the street. And it's definitely going to destroy my property value, value, our property value. You're knocking down two residential buildings and that completely border our property and you're making it completely commercial. And you're trying to stick both a drive through in one corner and actually, if you look in the other corner where the residential building is, it's actually a vacuum. So you know, you're taking down two residential buildings and you're putting a drive through, a building that's not allowed, a drive through that's not allowed, and then a vacuum. So I'm a little confused how, how the, the plans even should be accepted if, if nothing falls within the bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry, this is Rick.
Go ahead, Rick.
Just, I, I understand completely the reluctance of the neighbors to open their arms to this plan, let me put it, let me put it that way. But what the planning board is doing is a thing called site plan review. You know, it's the ZBA that's going to issue or not issue the special permit and issue or not issue the variance. So those really aren't items that we can address at the planning board level. But the comments relative to how that site works with the neighborhood, certainly we can take those into consideration and work with the developer and the surroundings on those. But again, I just really want to state emphatically, we cannot affect the special permit issuance or non issuance. We cannot, we cannot impact the issuance or non issuance of the variance. Those really have to be addressed in front of the ZBA.
Correct. Thank you.
All set.
Go ahead, David.
Mr. Chairman, to follow up on the traffic and the special permit, it's all tied together because if you look at the requirements for the issuance of a special permit by the Board of Appeals, there are criteria that have to be met. And it says that the board shall make the determinations and they go through these series of items. One of them specifically says access to the location should increase existing traffic by no more than 10% at any point. So the, the ZBA is deferring to the planning board for proper chat, traffic analysis under the site plan review. They haven't even submitted a traffic report yet. And the ZBA needs to make that determination that they're not increasing the traffic by no more than 10%. So I would hope that you will require a full traffic report be submitted and hire a, a peer review engineer, different than the stormwater engineer. If they don't have a traffic engineer on staff, that you would put that out for peer review as well. Because that has to be met in order for the building to be approved for what they're showing for size. So it's all interconnected, the planning board review of site plan will impact what the ZBA can or cannot do. Thank you.
Thanks, David, I don't know if you were at the last meeting, but we did ask the developer to prepare and submit a traffic study, I believe that's the reason Ms. Montecup, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly, is, is joining us tonight. So perhaps she could, well, I'll defer to the chair, but perhaps that could be explained what Ms. Montecup will be doing.
If you could, ma'am. I, I believe that Mr. McGlaughlin said you were in the middle of doing this review and it wasn't complete yet. Is that correct?
Yep, for the record, I'm Heather Monica with Greenman Peterson and I am the traffic engineer for the project. And we did attend a staff meeting, I think it was a couple of weeks ago after the first ZBA and planning board meeting and we did under, get the scope of the traffic study. That just happened, can't do counts over Columbus Day weekend because it's a holiday weekend. So we're, we're still in the process, so a traffic study has not been done at this point. What has been prepared at this point is a trip generation and site access letter that I believe was submitted for the original planning board meeting back a month ago or so. So we will be preparing a traffic study, we just have not done it at this point in time.
Okay, thank you for that, is there anybody else pro or con would like to speak? Please feel free, folks, we're trying to answer all the questions. I see someone with their hand up.
Mr. Sinrissio, Gary again.
Yep.
Nobody's still answered any of the questions that I asked earlier from New England Farms, what kind of services are going to be provided there? I think that we're here for a public meeting to get answers and there's no answers on that.
And what, what you, I lost, to repeat the question, you want to know what they're going to sell?
What are they going to sell there, what services are they going to offer, why do you need a 4,400 square foot building? Mr. McGlaughlin said that they've looked at other designs. So I'm kind of wondering, I looked at the plans and I'm no engineer, so but that building being that size, I can't see any other place for them to put it.
Is there anybody that can answer that question? I can't. I don't have an answer for you on that one.
I can, you know, as far as where they can put it, I, I'd like to try to take a shot on this one since, you know, New England Farms doesn't want to jump in.
Wait, hold on before we start, I think, is Mickey from New England Farms?
Mickey is one of the owners of New England Farms and also the developer of the project. I think most people on this call have visited one of our stores, either the closest one in New Bedford or one of the surrounding communities. But it's a typical, your typical convenience store offering. So lottery tickets, cigarettes, cold beverage, salty snacks, chips, gum. The purpose of the drive through would be for a morning coffee offering. Typically have a lunch offering. And it's your standard convenience store fare that I think we've all walked into a convenience store, whether it's to get a cold beverage or get a gallon of milk or get a loaf of bread. Two public restrooms, male and female. Utility room for electric service, electrical conduits, electrical panels. And to answer the question, is our 4,000 square foot store needed? Obviously, when we do a project like this, we're making a significant investment. We didn't just land on this property arbitrarily. We've met with several people in the community to get to this point. We've met with the building inspector multiple times. We've met the town planner multiple times, we've met members of the finance committee. This property is owned business. And many of you have a residential use, but your residential houses are zone business. So we're trying to be responsible. We think this is a good location for our business. People that we've talked to in the community think it's a good location for our business. And when you make the type of investment that we're making, it takes a certain size store to do a certain volume of business to pay back that investment. If you have a specific question about an item, what other item we're going to sell, other than coffee, other than a sandwich, other than a loaf of bread, other than a pack of cigarettes, other than a lottery ticket, I would be happy to answer that question.
How about beer and wine?
If there is a beer and wine license available in the community, we would apply for the beer and wine license without any question.
And Pizza Hut Express or some type of food service like that?
Sandwiches, yes, Pizza Hut specifically, no.
Okay, because the more services you're offering, the more money and the more, and as you stated, there's a significant investment, you're going to need to drive a lot of traffic through that location to get your investment back. So the interest in understanding what's developing with the traffic is the number of services does impact the amount of traffic that's going to flow through your site.
What do I have to do? We got to keep talking or we got to go?
I think that we should continue to.
Okay. With that, is there anybody else pro or con, I know we had a lot of questions answered.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Phil Lombardo.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just, I, before we, we break, I wanted to know if we could ask Henry, we've, we heard somebody mention, or Henry mentioned that there's been some kind of an opinion on the drive through, but we don't have anything, we don't have any, any comments or anything from any town attorneys or staff members or anything or, you know, pre-COVID used to be able to just walk into the office and pick up copies of anything that's been sent into the board. Could we, could we please have copies of what's been received regarding this file?
Well, with COVID here, I apologize to everybody, we're not used to Zoom, we're used to having everybody in the same room talking and it works out. But I can't fix this, but I can give you Henry and he can answer that or maybe we can, he can answer this one and we'll have to continue this one meeting on from this point, but here's Henry.
Good evening, Mr. Lombardo. After, after this meeting, we can, you know, tomorrow, we can discuss the, you know, exchange of information between our council and, and the developer, yourselves, who you represent. So I think it would be beneficial if we're
That's fine. That's fine.
With that, I don't know, we got someone on here. I don't know who's talking. But with this, you want to speak or someone wants to speak? No. With that, is there a motion to continue this meeting? Henry will get with Mr. Lombardo and town council and himself and render whatever decisions they render. Is there, Rick or Brian, do you have any other questions?
Nope, I have no other questions.
Rick?
I'm all set at this point.
Okay.
Mark, why would you want the town to go forward?
Would you repeat that again, please, sir?
Why wouldn't you want the town to go forward? Clean that junk that that's over there?
We're moving on it. We have to go by policy of what the laws state, public hearing, et cetera, et cetera.
But what I was saying is, I mean, this town could progress so much and go more forward and.
Who's speaking? I don't have a name or anything. Please, could I have your name, sir?
No, but I don't have a name right now, but.
Oh, Dad, I'm sorry. Forget it.
All right.
With that.
I mean, I think I think to the town. That's my opinion.
Thank you, whomever.
Mark, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing at this time and continue it until October 12th at whatever date you or whatever time you think is appropriate.
Is there a second?
A second, Dad.
All in favor?
Do you mean 12? Did you mean November?
Yes, November 12th.
Oh, sorry, November 12th. Sorry.
Yes, sir. Everybody get that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you all for the time. Is there a motion to go out of public hearing back into regular session?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much, folks. With that, we have 7:45 public hearing. Go from regular session into public hearing for 1209 Main Street Solar Project. Roy Morrison and Associates LLC, one of New Hampshire applicants represented by Rainey Gagnon, Zenith Consulting Engineers, Lakeville. This proposal is for a 90 kilowatt AC ground mounted solar array. Is there anybody from?
I would, I would, Mark, I would make the motion that we go into the public hearing for the, for said solar project.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. With that, do we have anybody from Zenith Consulting or their engineer?
Yes, sir. Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. The, the applicant, Mr. Nasser, is also here with us. A few weeks ago, we appeared in front of you, I guess, or at least the department heads kind of when we went over this project. We have implemented the changes that we were asked to implement. And we've submitted the packet and here we are tonight with a full packet for a special permit and site plan review in front of you. When we, when we presented at the last, at the last department head meeting, we were proposing 200 module unit, but after the electrical engineers got done with the design, found that we're going to actually have 198 with two dummy panels that don't work to make it look, to make it look like a full array. Make it look like it's not missing two panels. We're projecting it to be about 89.1 kilowatt DC, which is 72 kilowatt AC power. And to achieve what we're trying to do, it's going to involve us taking down about 11 trees in the back of this residential property. We're going to enclose the solar array with a fence. And we've also moved the inverters further away from the abutting property as recommended by Mr. Young. I think this is a lot smaller of an array than you guys typically see. So there's not as much of a presentation. Go over the with Merrily for the stormwater bylaw. She's written us a nice letter telling us that we're, she believes we're exempt since we're not changing any topography or ground cover type. We're just removing some trees. So we also feel that we're exempt. And we'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
I'll just read, well, is there anybody on? Would like to speak for or against us? With that, I'll read a letter. It's from Corrigan Acres Nominee Trust, Susan S. Amroth trustee, Keith R. Amroth trustee, subject number four, proposed solar project 1209 Main Street. Dear Chairman, first, we would like to commend the property owners for taking the initiative to proactively address cleaner energy needs and reduce the carbon footprint. Secondly, as director butters to the rear property line of 1209 Main Street, we have reviewed the proposed ground mounted solar project, site plan documents. We have no issues. Respectfully, Susan S. Amroth, Keith R. Amroth, that was sent in to us to read. With that, is there anybody else? Rick or Brian, do you have?
I mean, at the last, at the last meeting, there was a request to consider not requiring a decommissioning amount to be posted. I was wondering if the proponent had anything further to say for or against that and also part of the question is, I mean, is this a homeowner that's doing this? Or I mean, is this a corporation? That, I mean, if it's an LLC and they're tired of it, they just bail and they're gone. You know, I, I would, if it's possible, I would, I would like to, a little better understanding of the entity that's going to do this and own it as it goes forward.
Any gentleman want to speak on that? Mr. Bissonette or Mr. Nasser?
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. It is a commercial installation, to be clear. The land is leased from the Ferreras. They, they have chosen to do that. It's going to help them with their retirement medical expenses as they get, as they age. So it's a, it's a source of income for them. And it's related to the, the bond. I did reach out to SW Cole is the consulting engineers. At that last week, they had no information about this project in their office, so they couldn't comment on it one way or the other. I'm, I guess I'm not against a, a, a decommissioning bond. I did fine with that. We just wanted to be commensurate with the size of the project. That's, and, and I'm happy to work with SW Cole or with Cole to come up with a figure that's, that's appropriate.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I don't mind considering that. I mean, this is obviously a big difference from, you know, hundreds or thousands of solar panels, you know, spread across the landscape. I mean, we're talking more than something that, you know, a, a big dumpster or two would, would get rid of everything there. So I, if, if the timeline works for you and, you know, if we can keep you close to SW Cole, I mean, I'd be glad to see an amount posted.
To that, are you through?
I'm all done.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a quick comment?
Please.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Henry Young. Jamie, we've worked on this together. Thank you for coming in to speak to the department chairs. Two things, one, we, I would like to, to be consistent with all the other solar projects. It's probably appropriate to have an estimate. I don't think it'll take them very long to put it together. But Jamie, you would need to submit the plans directly to SW Cole, Derek, attention to Derek Mello. And he will, I'll let him know that that's coming.
Understood.
And then Jamie, if you could, just for the benefit of the board and others who are watching, if you could do the share screen and just highlight some of the changes that were required. And specifically, when, could you call out where fencing is around these units?
Absolutely. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. This is the existing structure, residential structure with the existing driveway and two outbuildings. Where, there's an existing utility pole here in which we'll be tying into with overhead wire. We're also going to be installing a utility pole here in here. The electric company is also looking for us to connect through one more section of overhead wire. And then from this pole, we can go underground electric over to our, over to our transformer. The fence that surrounds the solar panels is in this area and here, you can see it's aligned with a dot running around it. And then the solar panel arrays are these areas. There's four configurations. The inverters, we're placing one here, which is, I believe, attached to the racking system. And please, Mr. Nasser, speak up if, if I make any mistakes. We're also proposing one over here. And then the trees with the dash lines around them are the trees that are going to have to be removed for the project. We do plan on keeping the majority of the trees on site.
Is there a opening to get in and out of that fence?
Yes, there will be. Yes, they, they'll have to for lawn maintenance and also for cleaning of the panels, any, any also type of maintenance as well.
Can we get a fire truck in there, like a fire pickup truck?
We, we spoke in, into the opening. I believe that we can accommodate to make it big enough if that's the case. Yep.
Just in case if the fire chief will probably want that.
Could you, Rick Ellis again, could you move your magic hand around and show us the location of that butter that provided the, sent us the letter?
Mr. Nasser, do you know which butter that was?
No, I don't.
Did you decide?
Yeah, it's the one on the rear.
Okay. Okay.
That's where the bogs are, where the sand pit used to be?
Yeah, that's Connie's old road. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You get it, Rick?
Yep, all set. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Brian, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Henry?
I would, I would just note, Rick, that the fire chief has reviewed this and was favorable with the design.
Okay.
With that, we have to make a motion, right? Is there a motion for approval?
I, I would make a motion that we approve project subject to the decommissioning cost being agreed to between the, the planning board and the developer.
Is there a second?
A second, Dad.
All in favor? Unanimous for the three of us with that. So Jamie, you got that? You just have to get with SW Cole. So for that final decommissioning fee? And we have papers to sign on this or?
Yeah, there is a, once we get that decommissioning amount, Jamie and Mr. Nasser will put that into the special permit that goes along with this. And there's a 21 day appeal period for this because it's a special permit. So after 21 days, the board will sign the special permit. And the, and the site plan review.
Mr. Young and Mr. Chairman, as far as the opening for the truck and the gate, is that something that you'll put as a note in the special permit or do we need?
Well, it's up, if the fire chief is acceptable to the way it is, we're fine.
Okay.
Usually on these projects, they have to get in, but this is such a smaller project than most of the projects that we have.
Yes.
Okay. As long as the fire chief's happy, we're happy. With that, thank you, gentlemen. With that, is there a motion to go out of public hearing and back into the regular hearing?
Motion to go out of the public hearing and into the regular meeting.
A second, Dad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, 8:00 PM, we're running just a little tad behind. Going in from regular session back into public hearing?
Motion to go back, motion to go back into the public hearing for the common drive off of Main Street.
A second.
There a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that, is there anybody from, where am I? Fallon Corporation of Dartmouth?
Present.
Please introduce yourself, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jack DeBaris from Fallon Corp. We are requesting a special permit for common driveway for lots 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6, 5.6 on map three of Main Street. We have proposed a common drive to minimize the stem to as many trees as possible and to prevent any confusion of having three separate driveways so close together.
Jack, one second. Can you turn your volume up? You guys have trouble hearing him?
I'm having a very difficult time. There's a lot of, not interference, but it's like a real heavy reverb on his voice.
Maybe you can get the volume to come up, Jack?
I don't think I can.
Oh, you're getting better now, though. Maybe you got to get closer.
I'll try to be clearer.
That's great. Thank you, sir.
The proposed drive will also be made up of gravel to allow stormwater to percolate more freely. The proposed will, drive will also include a stormwater basin, excuse me, to treat any runoff. And the basin has also been designed to the town of Cushnett standards. If we kept them as single drives, no basin would be required and it would generate more runoff with the three separate drives. Common drive is also going to be wider than standard driveways. And it would, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. It'll be wider than standard driveways and it'll make it more accessible for EMS vehicles if necessary. The, the drive will also be private and all operator and maintenance costs will be handled by the, the three owners. I'll try to answer any questions that you guys have.
Gentlemen from the board, are there any questions, Brian or Rick?
No, I mean, when I, when I look at this, this seems to be exactly what that special permit was, was designed for, is to prevent three separate driveways right next to each other and combine them into one. So I, I, you know, there's stormwater control, which there normally wouldn't be with a driveway. I, I don't have any problem with this proposal myself.
Brian, you got anything?
No, I'm good. I'm all set.
Do we need a hammerhead here, Henry, or someone turn around somewhere?
Hey, Jack, can you explain how emergency vehicles would turn around at the end of the common drive? Maybe you could do share screen also, so people who don't have the plans can view your plan.
Is that visible to everyone?
It is.
Um, we do have room for our hammerhead turnaround at the rear lot if necessary. We can definitely accommodate that driveway to be big enough for whatever size vehicle would be required by the town.
Great. Can't ask for anything better.
Yeah, thank you.
I would recommend a meeting with fire chief first before we progress.
Oh, some kind of hammerhead?
Yeah.
With that, Jack, that'll be no problem, as long as you can meet with the fire chief, so he can have, give you some sort of radiators, whether it's a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac or whatever's easier for them to turn around, emergency equipment to get in and out, like an ambulance or a, a small fire truck?
Yeah, if they have templates for turning radiuses, we'll definitely implement those.
Sure. If you get with the fire chief on that, that'll be fine.
I know he'd appreciate it. He didn't pick up.
That's okay. We'll get to work on it. Do we?
I would recommend continuation until it finalizes and incorporates.
Okay. Is there a motion, we, motion to continue this till next meeting? So Jack can get to the fire chief to incorporate a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac or some type of turnaround?
I, I would make a motion that we continue this to the next, or to the next meeting at November 12th. At whatever time you select, Mark.
That's great. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, is that okay with you, Jack? You get to the fire chief tomorrow, get this all put together?
Yeah, um, do I call Pam for his contact info? He can call me.
You can call Henry. You got Henry's number?
I do not.
Okay. You can email him.
Okay, yeah, I have his email.
Okay. With that, there shouldn't be any other hassles. Can we tentatively make a motion till or the next meeting or? Okay, we'll wait till you finalize the. Okay, we'll wait till you finalize the, that hammerhead cul-de-sac turnaround with the fire chief and you should have no problems.
Okay.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing and go back into regular meeting?
Motion for adjourn and to go into a regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our 8:30 appointment is to go back into public hearing by law amendment article 83.3C.148, eliminate an article 83.3.3B, consider multi-family, a vote required to place on the warrant for fall town meeting. Henry, you want to talk on that?
Okay, so in, in the pre-COVID times, we had attempted to correct a problem with the common drive by law amendment. Section 3.3. C1488 is in conflict with the next by, by law item down. 3.3. C.1488 says no common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of any principal structure. And then the next item says that you have to have it within 150 feet. And that was for first responder access. So the fix is to simply eliminate 3.3. C148. So I have sent this to the Board of Selectmen to incorporate into the warrant if we approve it. And they will, that would be voted on at town meeting. The, the second this, maybe we should take action on that first and then I'll discuss the second.
Is there a motion to take that? Bylaw amendment, article 83.3. C148.
Mr. Chairman, can I chime in as part of the public?
Go ahead.
Um. Well, I agree that this, this bylaw is really messed up to start with, you know, that it doesn't make any sense. The question I, I just have about it is, should we, should we be just deleting it altogether? Or why not change the 150 to the street setback? Why have no setback? Because my concern is without a setback, somebody could propose a common driveway right up somebody's lot line, whereas their house is, say, you know, 15, 20 feet away. And then you literally have improper setback to an existing lot line. And furthermore, let's just say, like in this particular, the case that's driving this, if you will, you know, do you really want to have zero setback between the easement of a common driveway and a house? It should be whatever road is, 25 feet. Just something to throw out there.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, actually, you know, the, some of the confusion, David, was the, the interpretation of what the structures that we're, we're talking about. Within the bylaw, the structure is actually another road that is, you know, the, the structure is the road. It's not a, you know, structure on the property. I think that was part of the initial confusion in the interpretation of this. So we're, we're sort of eliminating that, that point of confusion. And I would say, you know, to your point, these bylaws are organic things and, you know, I, I really want to address this contradiction. And then, you know, maybe down the road, we can, you know, discuss the point you're, you're bringing, but I think they're mutually exclusive.
Okay, fair enough. Just thought I'd mention it.
Thank you.
So back to that, is there a motion to amend that article 83.3. C.148?
Make a motion to amend, to eliminate?
Zero second. Is there a second? Rick, you're muted.
No, there is, I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. And you wanted to comment on the second?
Yes, on the second item, this is for the allowance of multi-family in the business commercial district. We intended to table this until we've had a, a chance to better, you know, vet and have a public discussion on it.
Okay, I would make a motion that we, we table this issue for the time being until we've got a, a better understanding of what it entails and what needs to be done.
Is there a second?
It's a great idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Young, if I may, can, can I ask a quick question? Romanelli and myself are sitting here and we're talking about it, but it was our understanding from what way back that the, that the structure clause too, was to not have two or three common driveways next to each other to avoid a subdivision. And, and that was our understanding of the, the point of not having within 150 feet another structure being another common driveway roadway situation. Am I correct with that, Mr. Ellis and Mr. Young?
I, I I'm, I'm a little, we do so few of these, I'll be honest with you. I, I don't have the answer for you.
In general.
I'm not sure. It's been, it's been modified a couple of times and I'll, I, I don't think I understand the bylaw either, as it's written, to be quite honest with you.
The, the intent right now, Jamie, is to just eliminate the contradiction.
Thank you, and we appreciate that.
All set with that? Go out of public hearing, back into regular session? Is there a motion?
Motion to go out of public hearing, back into a regular session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 On 9:00 PM discussion over the process, we did that with Mr. Francois's property and Mr. Brooke and David. 9:15. A and R for four lots on Bradford Street, a private way prior to a subdivision control. The tear brothers' development of a cushion at Mass represented by John Romanelli of Zenith Land Surveyors of Vethed Mass. Now I know why you're there, John.
That's why he's here. So I'm going to actually present with John tonight.
That's no problem.
All right, and please bear with me as we're going to pull up the file so that we can show this. All right, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to share the screen.
Please, feel free.
Excellent, thank you. All right. So what, what we're proposing tonight and what we have in front of you is the improvement of Bradford Street to then be able to A and R or form a, some lots off that front on Bradford Street. The plan you have in front of you is roadway improvement plan, in which we're looking to improve the private way, which is an existing 40-foot wide private way that's undeveloped. In improving the way, we're looking to construct a 20-foot paved road with Cape Cod burn, a drainage facility. It would have water and sewer, and we would be looking at this time for three single-family houses on this side of the road. And in the future, we, we would also be looking at potentially developing this side of Bradford as well. As you can see, the way that we're proposing the road, the road is elevated from one side to the other, utilizing the road almost similar to cross-country drainage, but it'd be, it'd just be a gutter line flow down to a scupper that goes into a four bay and an infiltration basin. We have designed this basin to be in performance with the cushion that stormwater bylaws. The profile on the top shows that the steepest point of the road is four and a half percent. We do, we also show a fire truck turning radius in the hammerhead at the end. And we also have listed the waivers that we would need from the planning board, from the current regulations to construct this roadway within the 40-foot wide layout. I believe this is pretty similar to the, the Mr. Reese project that was in front of you a few months back on LeBonte Street.
Yep.
In this case, though, where we have some room where we can actually do some, some stormwater management and therefore that we are proposing that. I'd be happy to answer any questions and, and John's here. If you have any that I can't, I'm sure he can try as well.
Gentlemen on the board, any questions?
I'm just wondering, how wide is Pembroke Avenue in front of that street right now? It doesn't look.
Shows, it's a 40-foot wide right away, Mr. Ellis.
Yeah, but how wide is the actual pavement?
Oh, John is saying the pavement's about 18 feet.
About 18 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so that means that's where I'm getting. I mean, this Bradford Street is proposed at 20 feet. It's wider than the main road. You know, which is only 18 to 18 feet or so. Okay, that's, I'm all set.
Thank you.
And that down the end there, the water, that's a hammerhead down there you got, Jamie?
Yep, there's a hammerhead.
Nope, that's fine. That's all. I couldn't see it. Yep. It's perfect.
Thank you.
Brian, any questions?
Oh, looks good to me.
Uh, do we have to talk to DPW on this?
Well, I wanted to raise the issue of this being a Form C subdivision.
Okay.
So, John, you and I have talked a little bit about this being, you know, so this be an A and R or a Form C subdivision. So two, you know, hoops that you have to jump through. One is to prove that this road was away in existence prior to subdivision control. So for the, for the board, this is, this is a paper street, is that correct? Or is this just, you know? It's, that's my understanding.
It's an unconstructed private way that was a, the plan was recorded in 1922 for this whole neighborhood. I do have a copy of that with me if you want to see it.
Yeah, well, I just, for the benefit of the board, you know, you have to demonstrate evidence that it was in existence prior to subdivision control. So if you can, you can just hold that up to the camera or something that we could, we could see that.
We can scan that and email that to you as well, Mr. Ellis.
That's fine. The, the second thing is that
it's a two-sheet. Unfortunately, this says Pembroke Ave at the top, and you can clearly see the date is May 1921, the second page of it. Yeah, the recording date is here, June of 1922.
Okay, the, this, thank you. The second, the second stipulation that has to be met is that the way has to meet the planning board's present requirements for adequate access in its present condition. So, you know, I think that's the challenge here a- as far as, you know, doing the, the A and R versus the subdivision. So I was wanting to note if there's any, any issue just converting this to a Form C subdivision, I, I think difference that we would have to do, you change a little bit on the plan. We have a public hearing next week and and we move forward.
The public hearing would be next?
Right, not next week. I'm sorry, next, at our next meeting.
Yes, it does. Yeah, he, he want, that would be a definitive subdivision and, and as far as the process to get this approved, I believe. Mr. Young, our client is here with us as well.
Sure.
And so you're, my understanding was that town council had advised you that this was the proper path for approval on a situation like this?
They put that, you know, out for consideration by the planning board. And I'm not saying that, that's, I think it's the prerogative of the board.
Yeah, that's basically what the way I've read it in the, if you look at the A and R handbook that the Commonwealth has published, it basically says it's up to the planning board to make that decision. If the way is in existence prior to subdivision control, which it is, it is up to the board to make the decision whether or not you can A and R off of it or not. And I think a lot of the cases that I did look at, people were trying to get away with a fast one where the, the, the way was basically illusionary. You couldn't even, it had wetlands, it had a steep slope. But this is obviously a pretty flat piece of, piece of property here. It's not going to be very difficult to construct that, that Bradford Street right away. So basically, in, in what I read in the, in the A and R handbook is that it was up to the board's discretion whether or not you can A and R off of it.
I mean, it's a pretty simple design.
It's very simple.
And we have done two of these in this neighborhood as A and Rs, and I did bring those with me too, and they've I don't know if you can pop those up.
I can, yep.
Gentlemen on the board, how do you feel about that?
I mean, this is such a small street. It's, 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 the proposed construction is as good as or better than the construction of the street that it enters into Pembroke Street. Subject to them making these improvements, I, as long as that's part of the quote, Form A approval, I, I don't have a problem.
Brian?
Oh. No, I have a problem either.
Okay, is there a motion to then make this an A and R? Is that okay with you guys? Is there a motion? We have to make a motion on this, Henry? Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we consider this plan as an AR, an A and R approval, not required subject to the road being constructed and in place before any building permits are issued for lots on, off of the road.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, gentlemen.
Have a great night. Thank you, thank you.
With that, where are we? We signed all the vouchers. We got any mail handed? We don't have any mail, do we? Okay, how about stormwater permit presentation?
Merrily.
Merrily, are you on? What time was she supposed to be on? 9:15? Okay, how about a planner update? Hold on one second.
So, the first thing is, we have approved a couple of solar projects, you know, with special permits, and we had to wait for the 21-day appeal period to sign those. So those were up in the planning office and we'll, we'll need to have people stop by and sign those at their earliest convenience. Maybe we can schedule a time.
Well, uh.
We can all do that.
For the roll mine copy, 10 copies?
I, I have, yeah, nine copies for Zero Wing, 1050 Main, and the one that we did tonight.
12:09.
12:09. Thank you.
So can you guys get to the office, sign those? I bring them to you, but there's like 30 pages of stuff.
They're laid out on the floor.
That's right.
Um, just, I, I guess we've got to set up a time to go do it unless we can just walk in and sign the plans.
Yeah, I can leave the door, I can leave the door open tomorrow.
Yeah.
If that's possible.
You guys have time tomorrow?
I can get, I can fly there tomorrow.
Yeah.
You working? Brian?
Yeah, I can try to get by there at some point tomorrow.
So if you're working, we can make it another day.
As soon as, as soon as we can.
I'll get there. I'll make some time. I'll get there.
Okay.
Oh, no, this is, they're all going to be laid out on the table at the planning board office, Henry?
They're, they're actually on the floor.
On the floor, okay. I may have to pick them up to sign them, but.
That's fine. There are a lot of them, but that was the only, that was the only space big enough to lay them all out.
Okay.
You can do that. Now you see suite Merrily is on. How are you, Merrily? You're muted. You got to unmute yourself.
While Merrily's coming, coming in, the, the other thing I wanted to make mention of is the planning board secured a shared streets grant last month for about $13,000. And that was to build a walking slash bike path between Riverview Park and Slocum Street. I don't know if you've seen it, but it, the project was done very quickly by the DPW. They did a absolutely fantastic job. It looks great. If you haven't been down there. They did a absolutely fantastic job. It looks great. If you haven't been down there, in a couple of weeks, it's completely transformed. So it was a, it was real important project for that part of town.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Sweet Merrily, are you on?
I'm on. Yes, sir.
Stormwater permit presentation by Conservation Commission Agent Sweet Merrily.
Are you guys ready for me now?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, well, the reason that I, I want to do a permit, a stormwater permit is because people go in and clear out their whole, the whole lot, you know? And they don't need to do that, and it helps with stormwater if they don't. So I figured if we got, if we had a permit, then at least we would know who was doing what and to what extent, you know? So let me see if I can figure out how to share my screen here, and I'll show it to you. Share.
Is this the one particular projects or all the projects?
No, all the projects. I was thinking of giving it to both you guys and to Jim. And that way it, and that way that should cover pretty much everybody who's thinking about doing a project. I'm on the wrong screen here. Hold on. How do I get it to share? There it is. Okay. That's what I'd like to share right there. So it asks for different types of, of cover, you know, do you have turf? Do you have driveway? Do you have asphalt? Do you have trees? Do you have brush? Do you have dirt? You know, and then it asks what percentage and what is the slope? And, you know, who's going to take care of this? If you, if you're building a detention base, then who's going to take care of it? And what's the plan? How do you take care of it? All that kind of stuff on it. So I, I don't know. Do you guys have an opinion about it? There. Can you see it?
Yep. Can you guys see it okay?
Yep.
Oh, good. Okay, so that's the beginning. Like I said, it, it, it asked for plans. It, it's the proposed activity. And then how big is the parcel? What type of your soil? Do you have septic or sewer? How much is going to be disturbed and how much impervious area are you going to add, including the roof? And then it asks about cover. And then it asks who the owner, owner's name and address is, who's the, who's the applicant, who's the engineer? And who's the contractor? That way you can get in touch with anybody that you need to. And then, and then it talks about, you know, what are you going to do to make sure that it's not, we don't have massive erosion on this site and that sort of thing. And then it asks for the operation and maintenance plan and the personal person responsible for it and their phone number. And then, and then it asks about, you know, permanent stormwater management practices. And then there's a space for more information and a, a plan as, as build plan submitted date. So one of the things that the EPA is asking for is as-built plans of, of all kinds of, of construction, you know? So that's why I put that in there.
What do you want us to do? Just adopt this?
Yes, if you would. That'd be great.
And this is for any project now? If you're building a house, putting in a driveway, putting on a roof or?
Well, putting on a roof, you probably wouldn't need it. But, but for, yeah, for anything that's going to disturb the, the land, yeah, I would say that it would be appropriate for that.
So you're looking for an as-built for the complete project?
For the whole project, yeah. And they, you know, if it's a single-family house, they have to do an as-built plan anyway for the septic system.
Right, right.
Fine, but if it's a whole subdivision, we don't have as-built plans for those. You know, unless you guys ask for them, then I, and I don't know about it.
No, I thought we always get as-built. For subdivisions, yeah, subdivisions, we always get as-built.
We get as-built for the roadway construction and the associated stormwater management for that. But we don't get as-built for the individual lot plans.
Right, okay, good, good. That's great then. And then I can just, I can just put down the date that that, that was submitted.
Does that make it easier?
It'll make it a lot easier, yeah. Then we can, then we can map out where all the, the stormwater management stuff is, you know? Which way the water goes and where the pipes are and that sort of thing.
Gentlemen, any questions?
I have a quick one for Merrily. Merrily, a quick question. Does this include, I might have missed it, does that include, you know, detention and retention bonds?
Yeah, it should.
So is the DPW responsible for the maintenance of those?
When they accept the road, they have been accepting the, the detention basins, yes. But there are some that are on private land and that the homeowners maintain those.
Okay.
So it just depends on the project.
That's it. And Brian, anything? Rick?
A question to Henry. So now, what in order, would this be like a non-zoning bylaw proposal? What, what, would this be something that's incorporated, incorporated into subdivision rules and regulations? I mean, I understand what it is, but I'm not sure I understand the, the process or procedure to.
Merrily, do you, do you see this falling under your normal stormwater permit application process? It's just a modification to it?
Yes, yes. I don't think it needs to be, to be moved into any of the other bylaws. It's, the stormwater bylaw gives us the, the authority to do an application.
This just gives you more information on who, what, when, and where, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
Looks good to me, guys. What do you think? Is there a motion to accept this Commonwealth of Massachusetts Stormwater Review Board from Merrily's Stormwater Permit Application?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the Stormwater Review Board Stormwater Permit Application.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Excellent.
So all yours, Miss Merrily.
Thank you very much. Henry, I'll get with you about, about the actual working it into people's, you know, projects.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
With that, it looks like, anything else you want to say, Henry?
I found a South Coast media invoice.
We don't have any. Both of these?
Yes.
Henry, is, is there a time when you're normally around, around town? Like before or after one of these meetings with the rest of the department heads that I could get together with you?
Yeah, I mean, I think probably the best time is Tuesday. We normally meet from nine to ten these days. So right after that would be ideal.
Okay, so could I meet with you next Tuesday at like ten fifteen or something like that or?
Sure.
Okay, all right. I'll see you then.
With that, anything else? Brian, you all set?
I'm all set.
Rick, you all set? Merrily, thank you. Next meeting, November twelfth, six thirty. I presume it's going to be another Zuma Zuma meeting. And with that, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Boy, do I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
A unanimous. Thank you.